Welcome to tonight's Grinnell College Town Hall. I'm Michael Kahn, class of 74, and Chair of Grinnell's Board of Trustees. I know many Grinnellians are not that familiar with who serves on our board or even what we do. This isn't the time to talk about the work of our board, but it's pretty easy to tell you why I volunteer my time and energy in service of Grinnell. I do this because I really, really love Grinnell College. I love the deep sense of community that exists at Grinnell. I love the lifelong friendships and relationships that one builds at Grinnell. I love my wife Jenny, who I met at Grinnell. I love the incredible diversity and multiculturalism of Grinnell. And I'm so proud that our college is a national leader in creating access and providing aid for low-income students. I'm proud of the fact that the college provides all kinds of resources to help those students succeed and even thrive after being admitted. And I'm so incredibly proud of how many Grinnellians spend a lifetime dedicated to the greater good, to caring about and helping lift up others. Grinnellians don't just have good values and good hearts. They act on the things they believe in. And perhaps more than anything, I volunteer for and support Grinnell because I believe the world really needs more Grinnellians, now more than ever. So thank you all for joining us this evening to hear from our incredible President Anne Harris. Anne became president during an especially challenging time, just months into the pandemic. And her leadership has been nothing short of remarkable. Because of Anne and the policies she put in place, Grinnell has almost certainly been the safest place to be in all of Iowa during the pandemic. But COVID presented many challenges besides keeping everyone healthy. It also meant millions of dollars in lost room and board revenue and millions in new expenses needed to create full virtual teaching capabilities. Yet despite this, Anne worked with campus leaders and built board support to put in place a plan that resulted in zero staff or faculty layoffs, continued pay to students for campus jobs that were disrupted by the pandemic, provided laptops and Wi-Fi capabilities for high-need students so they could continue learning from home, and provided food and housing for over 150 students who could not get back home at all due to international travel restrictions and other circumstances. And to top it all off, Anne took the incredibly bold and impactful step of eliminating loans from financial aid packages during the pandemic, recognizing that many of our students' families have been hit hard by the pandemic. But more importantly, Anne took this step because she knows that student loan debt disproportionately burdens students coming from low-income households. Thanks to President Harris, it's now possible for our students to graduate debt-free, a policy we will work hard to continue. Anne has done a tremendous job in leading Grinnell College, and I'm grateful every day for her inspired leadership. So let me quickly describe the format for tonight's event. President Harris will offer some opening comments, and then we'll spend the majority of our time answering questions from you, our alumni community. We received 75 questions from our alumni in advance. The Alumni Council reviewed these questions and selected a diverse and representative group of questions to post to President Harris. After Anne's opening remarks, members of the Alumni Council will present those selected questions. My heartfelt thanks to those of you on the Alumni Council for all of the amazing work that you do and for your leadership in hosting and coordinating tonight's event. So now, without further delay, it's my sincere pleasure to introduce the 14th President of Grinnell College, Anne F. Harris.
Michael, thank you so much. I am humbled and emboldened by your introduction to continue the amazing work that we're able to do here at Grinnell, surrounded by a fantastic team of people. For everything that you described, there was a meeting, and there was resolve, and there was compassion, and there was determination to do all we could to continue to steward and steer this incredible institution. So I want to open with thanks as well to thank the Alumni Council for this brilliant idea and energy that they've brought to the idea of coming together for an evening. Of course, I want to thank you, Michael, for being my partner in hosting this exchange of ideas, which is really what I hope we're going to be doing tonight. Question and answer has this marvelous flow to it. And then the incredible team of DAR, Development and Alumni Relations, who really does make all things possible and, I've seen it, make the impossible possible as well. So I'm so grateful that we're all gathered here this evening. It is a pleasure, it is a joy for me to even think about connecting and communicating with so many of you through the marvels of modern technology, but also, also, through this deep, abiding love for this institution. That has held us in such good stead through so very much. So I'm doing this, in some ways, I feel like tonight opens a threshold that will extend to reunion, to the next time you're on campus, to the next time we can be together in person. So it really opens up. Yeah, I like to think of it as a threshold, as a journey to each other once again. As I do so, I really want to think about us as, what it means for us. You know, I take formats seriously, and I try to think about what we're doing, what we're intending to do when we come together. So Q and A, sounds like a simple, straightforward thing. But I really want to pause and think about that dynamic of questions and answers, right? Of caring enough to ask about this institution, of looking to all the different individuals who come together to create answers to questions, all the research, all the knowledge, all the care that comes through that. And what I really appreciate about questions is that I get to see what matters to you. And so, again, Alumni Council formatting this as a question and answer, formatting this as saying, what do you care about? What are you curious about? What do you want to know more about? Which is a marvelous Grinnellian strain of the pursuit of knowledge. And I want to introduce a phrase, or reintroduce probably for many of you, but one that has really inspired me for a very long time. And this is, this comes from John Dewey and his thinking, and that is the idea of a community of inquiry. And what that is, and what that means. And that is to continue to ask questions. And we have our thing on our website about, you know, asking hard questions and questioning easy answers. But I really want to valorize what it means to be a community of inquiry together. And then when you couple that with being a community of care, I think you have a very distinctive and a very powerful place, and that is indeed Grinnell College. So if you've spent time with me, or if you've had the occasion to do another one of these Zoom calls, you know that I love the English language. It is my second language. I grew up speaking French in Switzerland until I was nine, and then came to the United States and thanked, there was no English as a second language, as it was called then. So thank you Sesame Street. I'm a lifelong supporter, lifelong learner from Sesame Street. But I really came to love the English language because of its kind of hunger, because of its way that it took from Latin, but also German, also, you know, it's a very multiple language. In fact, lots of, lots of Hindi words, lots of words from many different cultures. So I will always be fascinated by the words we use. And one of my fascinations, indeed, lies with the word alumni. So I've said this in a couple of different settings, but I think tonight is another moment that it's important to go back to the roots of that word. In that instance, they are Latin words, Latin roots, rather. So alumni, the alum part, the root word, comes from the Latin word for "to nurture." And I love how we can take that word as meaning both to nurture. How does the, how does the college nurture the alumni? But also, how do the alumni nurture the college? So I invite you tonight, as we go through these questions together, as we think about it, to think, how have you been nurtured by this college? And how do you nurture this college now? And that symbiotic relationship of nurturing, I think, is really powerful. And in case you care about the other ways that etymology follows, the old term alma mater, the beloved mother, it's also the nurturing mother. So, you know, there's some really interesting gender metaphors going on there in terms of how we conceive of our colleges. But I wanted to underscore the word that brings us together tonight, that you all are alumni, that you have all been nurtured by this institution, that you nurture this institution, that we exist within complex relationships to this institution. And I'll touch base on that again, actually, as we continue. So I have a couple more introductory comments here that I just want to say. I want to acknowledge, as I have with our community this year, that we all carry something and we all bring something to this evening, to Grinnell, to everything that we're doing these days. And what I mean by that is that we're all, again, the English language, right? Allows us to use both of those words. We all carry something. There is something heavy within all of us through witnessing what has been happening in this country, through, yes, this pandemic, through racial reckoning, through socioeconomic distress and puzzlement and unknowing what's happening in the future, let alone what's happening in the present, let alone the loss and the grief that we've endured over the past two years. So it's always important to me that when we hold a space together, we acknowledge that we all carry something and also that we all bring something. Something to share, something to give, something we're excited about, something to show. And when I said this to my students, I taught a .5 credit class this year, getting my way back into the classroom. When I taught that to them, they're outpouring, I just said that was how we introduced ourselves to each other. What do you carry and what do you bring? And the wisdom and the depth of experience that they brought gave me both hope and humility for what we do here at the college, the kind of space that we hold, how important Grinnell College is in those moments of four years of education, but by extension, the kind of space that you as Grinnellians are holding, the kind of sensitivity and knowledge and curiosity that you bring as well. So when I think of our community of inquiry tonight, it is large. It is expansive, and it is absolutely marvelous. So I want to end by thanking you, each and every one of you that I think about connecting with tonight. In terms of your commitment to Grinnell, presence is its own kind of commitment. And as was said to me when I came into this position by a marvelous faculty member, Anne, you'll have plenty of challenges here at Grinnell. People not caring is not one of them. And that has proven true every day in every way in everything that I've done. So I welcome you warmly to this evening of questions and answers, to this evening of being a community of inquiry, to opening this long threshold until we can be together again in person. And with that, Michael, I will turn things back over to you, and we can get started.
Different members of our Alumni Council will be asking tonight's questions. They're each going to introduce themselves before sharing the question. And first up is Debbie Fear from the class of 1968. Debbie?
Thank you. As Michael said, my name is Debbie Fear, and I am from the class of 1968, calling in tonight from my home in New Britain, Connecticut. Our first question tonight comes from Linda Newman-Wata, class of 1962. It is, how are enrollments going?
Debbie, it's great to see you on the screen. It's great to have just seen you during our Alumni Council get-together, and I really thank you for this question. So this is my opportunity to quote Lester Alamon, which I hope to do a lot of for the rest of my life. And this is a quote that he spoke at an Alumni Council meeting, I think it was a Zoom meeting several months ago. And it is the following, "Never underestimate the prairie." And of course, the addendum to that is never underestimate Grinnell College. So here we are at Grinnell, in Grinnell, Iowa. And I have some data for you that I think is just incredible. So this year, we set a record for our applications, 11,658. We'll let that sit, 11,658. 10 years ago, we were at about 3,000 applications, and now we have grown tremendously. In fact, 250, let's see, 256, 250% since 2011. So that's 11,000 applications for 435 spots. That's a lot of interest in the institution. And many schools have seen their applications grow, but not at this rate. This is truly remarkable. The school after us in the Midwest, or in terms of our peers, has grown by 187%. So I wanted to give you the comparative data as well, to 250%. So what this means is that our admit rate, in terms of number of students admitted to the college based on number of students who applied, has dropped from 28.9% in 2017 to a projected 8.7% in 2022. This puts us in rare company, it truly, truly does. And I'm grateful to Joe Bagnoli, Vice President for Enrollment, and his entire team, not just for the data, which is very precise, .9, but also, of course, for making this happen, for shining the light from this college to this entire world. Truly, we're a global college, as you'll see with some more data, over this tremendous 10-year trajectory that he has led. A second one is our yield rate. So our yield rate is the number of students who accept our offer of admission. That has also increased from 26.5% in 2017 to 42.7% in 2022. So we, I said rare company, we're in rare air. There are multiple ways for you all to think about that, to think about what this means for your college, for how it is seen in the world, for how it is seen globally, for how it is seen in our nation. There are 50 states represented, 50 nations, 62 languages spoken at the college in Grinnell, Iowa. And I'll get back to that theme in just a minute. And here again, the English language comes to our rescue to give us something to think about. We are elite. We have to accept that. We are an elite college with those kinds of numbers. Let us not be elitist, right? That is what I think about when I accept those numbers and I see that admit rate dropping from 28.9 to 8.7. We are elite. We are an elite company. We are, haha, hard to get to, but then we do so much to create access to ourselves as well. So I want to keep that distinction, I think, for years and years to come. We are elite, but we will not become elitist. Very important. And then with that, just a few more things. We're about to, and this is to the access point that I just made, we're about to enroll a class this fall with the highest percentage of first-generation students in several years. And we've all been here very responsive to the pandemic. Michael mentioned the no loan, that was very important to me. Very, Joe, of course, leading the way, working with finance teams, working with Nancy Colmes, others, to really make this happen, to make it happen sustainably as well. So there's a whole lot of planning that goes into that. We expect to enroll the largest percentage of domestic students of color in the college's history. So that's 29% of the student body, projected. We'll all know, you know, finally, on May 1st, but there's a lot to celebrate even now. So 29% of the student body being students of color. And for the first time, Latinx students are expected to represent 10% of our class. And I think of that in terms of opportunity. I think of that in terms of responsibility and in terms of accountability to our students, to our curriculum, to our faculty, to our staff. I will tell you this as well, and this is the work of the college, the work in the college. Applications from domestic students of color have increased by 81% since 2014. And we have seen a significant growth of historically underrepresented students in our applicant pool. Now, the next step is to carry that over into the experience of our students as well. And I want to put a term out there for us, that we are projected this year, for the first time in our history, to be a majority multicultural college. And what I mean by that is that domestic white students will be in the minority. It's a very, it's very close to around the 50% mark. But this really anchors how I speak about Grinnell College when I'm out there, or anybody who doesn't know us. Grinnell, Iowa, very rare, increasingly rare. I'll say, yes, we are a global college in a rural setting with a national voice. And what Joe Bagnoli and his incredible team have done is make that very, very real in the incredible promise and potential and experience and presence of the incredible students that I can speak to you about in our enrollment. Thanks.
Oh, good evening. My name is Robert DeHorsen, class of 1976. I'm calling in from Los Angeles this evening. I'm also looking forward to serving as the next Alumni Council President, with my term beginning in June. In that context, I would like to remind and encourage everyone to register for reunion and hope to see all of you there. So our next question comes from Kartik Shaith, class of 1993. And he asks, what are your top three priorities for Grinnell in the next five years? And how can we, as alumni, help you accomplish them? President Harris?
Thank you so very much, Robert, and thank you for that marvelous invitation, yes, to come to campus, to be here. So I love this question because it lets me talk to you about the kind of, you know, where the energies are going. And there is a strategic plan. It will become much more public, and we'll be involving each other next year as well. I won't go over necessarily the strategic plan. It has five parts. You won't be surprised, community is one. Educational excellence and continuity is another. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is the centerpiece. Health and well-being is the fourth. And financial sustainability finishes out the five parts. So right now, there are strategic priorities. They are principles within which we're operating and which we're planning. But I want to be more specific than that with you all. I wanted to put three very concrete things that I hope that in five years we can talk about as having been fully implemented, as having been completed. And then, of course, we'll ask ourselves, what's next? So with that, the first one is to increase our graduation rate. That is not just a number, that is an experience. We are currently in the low to mid 80s, 83% to 85% for a four-year graduation rate. And yes, that is fantastic compared to the challenges, the real challenges of the higher education sector right now, which has a 42% four-year graduation rate on average. Now, that's an enormous average across all different kinds of models of higher ed and so forth. Within our peer group, what we affectionately call the Peer 16, which is from Williams to Amherst to Bowdoin to Pomona to Carlton to McAllister, that was my map of the United States, by the way. Within that peer group, we are, we are lagging, right? They are at 92 or 93%. So to raise the graduation rate by 10%, when I say it's not just a number, I want to be looking at that graduation rate in terms of student experience. We have done a lot of good preliminary research that indicates it is not academics, it is seldom finances, it is belonging. So that is what I mean, that is the qualitative element of that answer. Students leave because they are lonely, or they are isolated, or they don't connect. There isn't that trajectory of connection and community that we hold dear, that as alums, you may have felt or felt was lacking. And I, so I think there's going to be understanding for this, as I speak to you about it tonight. That graduation rate needing to rise equitably across all demographics, that's another thing that we're doing with, working with Dr. Shavala Rivera in the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We are metrics-driven and qualitatively informed as well. So raising that graduation rate is really about deepening the sense of belonging for our students. And I will tell you, that was something that I came into the institution thinking about post-pandemic, or wherever we are on that other long threshold out of the pandemic. That has become, that has become more important than ever because, and I speak to you as the mother of three children who are ranging from ages almost 16 to almost 20. This has marked a generation of young people. And they'll be coming to us with a very different sense of what community means, with a different hunger for community in person, residential community. And so I take this responsibility and this challenge of raising the graduation rate deeply qualitatively when it comes to belonging. And boy, we can talk about that for a very long time. Now, what I love is, you asked, how can you as alums help, help us accomplish them? So the first thing I would say here is mentoring. If alums want to help students have a sense of belonging and a sense of connection and a sense of possibility, which is often what gets you through a long Iowa winter or through a tough biochem exam, is mentoring. Connecting through affinity groups that are coming out of the alumni office, connecting when you're on campus for whatever reason, Wilson Center, reunion. And there's, we have students here in the summer as well. So we have wonderful mentored advanced projects, and students do research in the summer. So mentoring is my one-word, all-caps answer to that excellent challenge that I want to set for us all of increasing that graduation rate, deepening the sense of belonging. The second is Grinnell as destination. Again, five years from now, if we do something like this, what can I be telling you about Grinnell's destination? So this is the pride of place that I have in this college and in this community. I've often said, Grinnell College matters for its excellence. It matters for turning knowledge into action. It matters because it holds a very particular kind of space open in the state of Iowa, in the sector of higher education, in the United States, and within global networks, frankly. A kind of space that values inquiry, that values agency, that values identity. So making Grinnell as destination is basically saying, come and experience this college. So we have this incredible humanities and social science complex. We have a Salisbury collection. This is a series of rare books purchased from the beautiful Salisbury House in Des Moines. We have research facility, we have facilities and resources that I think should be experienced by friends of the college, alumni of the college, people who want to understand the experience and who want to feel the experience of being in a community of inquiry. So Grinnell's destination, really, if I can be even more pragmatic, it looks at the summer. Who wants to come here and have their conference, have their retreat, have their space to come together and gather? How do we make our speakers feel like they're a part of our community? Maybe even longer than just that dinner or that speech that they give. So, you know, how can alums help? Come to campus, host an event here, tell people about coming to Grinnell College. And the last one, a very concrete goal in the next five years, is to see the Civic Engagement Quad to completion. This is our downtown student residence. This is something that began with my predecessor, and we've now moved it, and I've kind of morphed it into something else, along with all the other people working on it. We are currently honored to work with Ajay Associates on the design of the Civic Engagement Quad. It is a residence hall with a civic innovation pavilion, as well as plans for spaces of respite, spaces of community performance, a really different way of thinking about what a college town is and how a college community lives with its city community. So campus and community coming together in this really interesting space. What I want to say to that is kind of stay tuned. But what drives all this is my vision of civic trust for the college, of how, yes, individuals come to trust each other, of how individuals come to trust institutions, and of how institutions come to trust each other. The Civic Engagement Quad as a hub for that work, partnering with the college, partnering with the community to address things that we can only address in partnership. Third-grade literacy rates, as we've done here. Rural health, rural mental health, food scarcity, other issues that we can come together and talk about. And this is where I feel really ambitious for the college. How can the college be a model of a rural community working with a college? And I say that to you within the political context of this country, which has a political divide that isn't geographic, but instead is more rural and urban. So I have lots of ambitions for us there. Seeing the Civic Engagement Quad to completion is an architectural ambition. It is also a civic ambition that brings the college and the community together. Thank you so much for that question. It's got me all energized.
Hi, I'm Anton Jones, class of 2002, and I'm a proud Vikings fan from Minneapolis, Minnesota. Our next question comes from Mitch Erickson, class of 1972. President Harris, how do you see the Grinnell education changing in a post-COVID era?
Anton, it's great to see you again. It's great to see your backdrop and to hear your enthusiasm. So I'll have more to say about athletics later. So this question is brilliant because we really get to start articulating what we're seeing and what we're experiencing. Number one thing, community matters. We are so keenly aware of what it means to be in community, what a community is because we've lived in virtual communities. People talk about how, what got you through the pandemic. The return to Grinnell was so powerful, people coming back, students wanting to come back so very intensely. And I say that acknowledging some of the grief and loss that was there and not being able to come back. So I will say, community matters is the number one thing. And residential colleges are poised to provide models and to provide experiences in answer to that. I will say, how community is understood has some really interesting differentials. For students, it's absolutely about being in person, being together, living residentially, traveling, laughing, dancing, all of the things. I mean, really, dancing, Harris parties are back. I don't know if there are any alums for whom that means anything, but apparently that was very important. They're named after a building that is called Harris. So all of it, right, the full experience. I will tell you that faculty are teaching in person. They really wanted to teach in person. But there's also more of a kind of cadence of remote work and in-person work. So community, being in person for the students is everything. But there's a new kind of aspect, I would say, especially for faculty and staff. But faculty are in the classroom. We're doing accommodations within the pandemic, of course, but they're in the classroom. And, and we're, you see me, the sentence isn't smooth because we are thinking through what remote work means within a community. The second one is quality of life. The second one is quality of life and work-life balance. Everyone is keenly aware of that because it was thrown so out of balance, what it meant to work, what it meant to live, was so incredibly different, not just, obviously, not just because of precautions, although there were many, but also because of consequence, because of worry, because of all the things, again, that we've lived with. So there is this sense of, in some ways, slowing down in a very ambitious community like ours has presented a whole host of challenges. But we've all been listening and thinking, and I really want to credit Dean Elaine Marslove for coming up with the Working Differently Days this semester. It was three days run each month in which there were no meetings and classes. No meetings, no classes, you worked differently. It wasn't just a day off, it was a moment for respite, a moment to think differently about what it is that we're doing here. And there was quite a bit of skepticism in the beginning, and there will always be skepticism, there should be. But when I get a message from a student that said, this is the coolest idea ever, I feel different. When I taught my class the next day and I saw the students refreshed and they could talk about it and they had done something that they hadn't had the time to do, whether it was to take a walk, to eat with a friend. A phrase that I find myself using a lot is, fill your cup, fill your cup, take that time to do what restores you. And so I really want to point that out as important. I'm also seeing the need for efforts to be worthwhile. And that's important for us to articulate the work of the college as worthwhile. That's not just, again, is it worth my while to study for this art history test? It's the idea that knowledge is worthwhile, that we need to keep moving in this a great deal. So few things are taken for granted, and what needs to be worthwhile. The last thing I want to bring to this, a couple of quick points. The stigma about asking for support for mental health is ending. That's another big, big change that I see. The stigma for asking for mental health support is ending. I'll have more to say about that in answer to another question. And the last thing I want to point you to is for you to Google, "Grinnell College Thrive Principles." Each of those letters stand for something. We came up with this at the beginning of the pandemic. Transparency, health, rethinking, inclusion, vulnerability, and empathy. And truly, that is the framework within which we are trying to live now in this post-COVID era.
Thank you so much for spending an evening with us. It's good to see you. My name is Lester Aliman, I'm from the class of two thousand and seven, and I'm proud to serve as this year's Alumni Council President. Joining you tonight from Jersey City, New Jersey, which is New York City adjacent, minus the high taxes, which is nice. And it's so wonderful to see so many alumni tuning in tonight. It's very exciting for all of us. This next question comes from Monique Short, class of nineteen ninety. What action is the college planning in response to the new state law banning transgender females from participating in athletics?
Thank you so, so much. Lester, it's great to see you as well. Monique, thanks for the question. There's no doubt, House File 2416 contradicts our Grinnellian values. This is something that I said in a statement to the community. This is something that I believe every time, or not just believe, but rethink again as I look at the law, as I consider with many partners, how we're going to live and challenge what we're seeing being presented. So welcome to Iowa Politics. It's a really interesting set of relationships. And one of those is actually the Iowa Association of Independent Colleges and Universities, so the IAQ. And these are all presidents who come together, and I had the privilege of attending the latest president's meeting. There was time with the governor, time with the Senate Majority Leader, time with the Speaker of the House. And I just want you to know, this came up in every meeting. And part of the reason that it did is because college presidents find themselves between NCAA regulations and statements and state legislation and statements as well. So the particularities of this law, and we could talk about it all night long, but is to make the point that this is a law that is activated not just by the law itself, but by a lawsuit by a particular individual. So it would be a citizen suing an athlete, the institution, the conference, the NCAA, any number of things that would trigger what we're reading in that law. So there is, in some ways, nothing to be done until that lawsuit happens. And I say that institutionally. There is plenty to be done in terms of what we're watching ACLU and One Iowa do. There's a lot of activism, whether that's seeking to develop understanding, whether it's advocacy, and of course, preparation as well. So what we are doing concretely right now is supporting our students and faculty and staff. We have, again, out of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, the Stonewall Resource Center. We've got outreach to our students. I was incredibly moved by the athletic department's moving into action and partnership with the Office of ODEI, with the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and doing what we do, reaching out to each other and saying, this is happening, this is framing our experience, this is framing your experience. What can we do right now, this evening, this hour, this week, this month? And so that's what we're doing at this point. I will tell you, I'm looking forward to lavender graduation as it's coming up. And this is exactly what I mean by Grinnell College holds an important space in the state of Iowa, in the nation, in our politics. We are by no means the only college going through this. As I mentioned, the presidents of Iowa themselves are all, we all had a conversation about this, different opinions, different responses. But it is very, very much a part of the conversation. And that's important, that things not slip away. So I wanted to give you a little bit of where we are now. We're in a liminal space with this. Our commitment is to our students, to our faculty and to our staff.
And if I could just jump in, I think all of you should know that we have a president who leads with courage. And there will be times where we see legislative acts taken in the state of Iowa that don't align with our values. And Anne is right there in making sure the actions of the college are consistent with who we are, what we stand for, what we care about, and willing to engage with those in positions of power to try to drive positive change. But you would be proud of how she has been responding to some of these actions in the state.
Good evening, from my home in Grinnell, Iowa. I'm Claudia Beckwith, class of nineteen seventy-seven. Our next question comes from John Brent Knoll, class of nineteen ninety-three. How can alumni and friends of the college direct donations to best support diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts?
Claudia, it's so great to hear your voice and it's so great to see you. So I have some very specific recommendations and examples of gifts that are unrestricted but directed towards the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. That is your most immediate impact, I would say, in terms of enabling the fantastic ideas and programming that Dr. Chevala Rivera and her team are putting together. That's a big change that we've affected over the past couple of years is to create an Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We've had an officer, we've had a CDO, a Chief Diversity Officer, for many years, but now an office and an entire team that actually comes together. So that's very concrete, unrestricted but directed gifts to ODEI. The second is to give you an example of where might those gifts go. We always think about programming, but we're trying some new things here in our understanding of what it means to live at a college like ours, a residential college. And these are student affinity-themed houses. So there's a new one this year, and I'm going to read a little bit from this because it's just come out and we're recruiting students for it. This is out of ODEI, Jasmine Brooks sent this wonderful email out. For the Sowabona House, which aims to provide Black and Pan-African diasporic students at Grinnell with a space that promotes reflection and relationship building. And the word "Sowabona" is a Zulu greeting, meaning "I see you." It recognizes each person's presence, worth, and dignity. So this is intentional living, intentional programming with the Connie M. Kimbo Black Cultural Center as well. So a really full living experience, trying to see the whole student, as we like to say. And what I'm hoping for here in the long term, in terms of, again, how can you contribute to ODEI and what are you contributing to? You'll want to know that. Is for us to move from a PWI, from a predominantly white institution or a persistently white institution to a multicultural college. How that's going to be experienced will be different than the way that it was experienced a hundred years ago or even fifty years ago, or arguably even thirty years ago. So thinking about things like the lived experience of the students, I think that's a really key part. I would also point to your creativity. So here, I have to, a big shout out to the Alumni Council for coming up with the Alumni Council Racial Justice Endowed Internship, which makes it possible for a student to engage with funding from the college, thanks to this endowed internship, in racial justice work. So things like that, I think, are really, really incredible. And then I have a couple of web addresses that hopefully can be shared, but alumni.grinnell.edu/bipoc, alumni.grinnell.edu/lgbtqia. So there's a great deal there that you can do. That's the most immediate thing that I would say. And then I do go back to mentoring, mentoring over and over again, that Grinnell community that can sustain our students and I think also sustain you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Becky Reitz-Neal, and I'm speaking, I'm from the class of sixty-five, and I'm speaking to you also from Grinnell. I have a question that was submitted by David Gassaway, class of nineteen ninety-one. What strategies are the college undertaking to attract and retain staff, given that the college is located in a small town in the middle of Iowa?
Great, thank you so much for that, Becky. It's great to see you, and I love it when I see you every once in a while, out in town as well. So the first thing here is to recognize the transformative presence of Jana Grimes, our Vice President for Human Resources, which, like me, thinks a great deal about the experience of the college. How is this college, not only what is it doing, but how is it being experienced? How is it nurturing and being nurtured? So her partnership with Dr. Chevala Rivera, the Vice President for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, is actually a key factor in answering your question. And I want to mention another team member, that's Mark Reed, who's the Associate Chief Diversity Officer and the Diversity Recruiting Manager. So the three of them, I would say, are really at this hub of thinking about recruiting and retention of faculty and of staff. And what I want to point out here, a word I'm going to use increasingly in the rest of our time together, is the trust that people put in us when they come to us. Eight percent of our students are from Iowa. That is a small percentage. That means ninety-two percent of our students come from somewhere else. They trust us to come into this space. The same with our faculty and staff. Actually, that's a set of data points that I should get, right? Faculty and staff are coming into this community and they're committing to us with their expertise, with their labor, with their creativity. So we're thinking a great deal about what this means. And this goes back to that post-COVID era question as well. You know, what it means to come into this community. So I will say, we are looking at wages, especially in the technology sector, and dining, the whole dining industry as well, has been rocked. And Grinnell has not been immune from that at all. So we're looking at wages, we are looking at benefits. And Grinnell benefits stay remarkable. But not everyone is going to respond to this very same thing. So we're also looking at work-life balance, we're looking at remote work differently. And I will say, what undergirds all of this is that sense of purpose, that sense that moving to Grinnell, Iowa, being a part of Grinnell College is going to be worthwhile. So there's a creative, pragmatic element, and there's an abiding principled element as well. I will tell you that I moved, you know, my family, three teenage children, this marvelous husband, and it was because Grinnell College was worthwhile. It was because it was an excellent place. But excellence can give you a sense of purpose, but it's not everything, right? And I understand that. And so being a part of something important, being a part, and where you can feel your own value at the institution. So again, just to loop back, pragmatic, let's talk wages, let's talk benefits, let's talk remote work, work-life balance, and principle, the purpose, the fact that you're contributing to a place that really matters and matters on a very expansive scale. I'll turn it over to you, Michael, I think, yeah.
Anne, I'm just going to add, I can tell you, from my perspective, I see you in college leadership doing an excellent job in attracting outstanding and diverse faculty and seniors' leadership to the college that Grinnell is, just as we see it in the enrollment numbers that you shared, which are our best ever, we're also seeing it, we attract the best and brightest, the competition for these opportunities to either teach at Grinnell or take on a senior staff position at Grinnell. We're attracting the best and the brightest. So all of us who spent time in Grinnell know about the magic that happens there and know this is a special place. But that reputation also goes a long way to attracting very talented and diverse group of people to the college.
Well, sending all my love to my fellow Grinnellians. Happy Thursday. I'm Graciela Guzman Chisholm, a proud Posse scholar from the class of two thousand and eleven, and I'm calling in tonight from Chicago. Our next question comes from Rebecca Neal, class of nineteen sixty-five. Does the college maintain oversight of student government? If so, could you describe how it works? How has this changed in the last few years?
Graciela, it's so great to hear your voice, it's so great to see you, and greetings to Chicago. And I know how busy you are, so it is such an honor to have you tonight in this glad company. So I love the language of this question, maintain oversight of student government. And I really thought a lot about that word when I was reading the question. So maintaining oversight, to me, translates to maintaining responsibility with and for student government, in our responsibility to support, nurture, facilitate, educate, and learn with this next generation of leaders. So student leadership, like student media, is a really important part of the Grinnell experience, and frankly, I think a really important part of the Grinnell contribution. And yeah, I think I'm going to do this because it's now public news. Grinnell College does produce incredible leaders. And by produce, I really mean shaped by those incredible leaders. The conditions here are productive of phenomenal student leadership. And what I'm happy to announce to you all is that we have a Truman Fellow among us at Grinnell College, Loyal Terry, who will be graduating in two thousand and twenty-three, was just selected out of seven hundred and fifty applications. I think there are only about fifty recipients in the United States. So that's just a marker of what I mean by our investment, our responsibility as a college to nurture, to make things possible for these incredible, I'm going to say young because they're early in their transformative careers, incredible people. So a shout out to Loyal Terry tonight. He is in Washington, DC, doing great work even this semester. So why, why have this sense of responsibility? There, again, I would say, the principle of student leadership, I think, is a really important part of our educational mission. Pragmatically, again, I will tell you that there's much more accountability and much more liability to being a student leader now than there was before. So we've had some very real conversations with Student Government Association over the past several years about the terminology that we're using for student leadership and student government. The term autonomy has come up, the idea of being an autonomous student government. And I will tell you that that is a term that I'm seeking to dislodge. And we're having, when I say real conversation, we're talking it out. What does autonomy mean? What does autonomy mean within a community of inquiry? What does autonomy mean within a community that seeks to understand coalition building? When in fact, I mean, autonomy as isolation, I think, is deeply problematic. We need partnership, we need coalition building. And we're working on this through, always, our investment and our reinvestigation of self-governance. So here, again, I would say, Grinnell, you know, Googling Grinnell self-governance, you'll see the history of it. Googling Grinnell community standards, you'll see a longer explanation of what self-governance means and what it can be. And I think it's truly, truly exciting. I'm thinking many of you on this call probably served and led in student government. And I think it is an evolving principle of residential education, very much an evolving principle of Grinnell College, with that phenomenal ideal of self-governance. So does self-governance mean autonomy? Or does self-governance mean coalition building within community, within a set of principles that have been arrived at in community? There's a lot of open conversations about this. And SGA is a vital part of the institution, and it's a partnership that I look forward. It's a partnership that renews itself every year as we have elections and move forward. Thank you so much for that question.
Hello, everyone. I'm back again with a question from a second alumni. This excellent, excellent question comes from Paul Christman, class of nineteen ninety-nine. And Paul asks, "The growth of the endowment over time suggests that our investment returns have consistently outperformed our spending. So given this, does it make sense at any point to consider increasing the endowment?" So given this, does it make sense at any point to consider increasing the endowment payout rate to give the college greater financial resources to use in the present day?"
Robert, thank you so very much for that question. I'll be joined by Michael, as he and I are close partners in the, in the operational and strategic responsibility to the endowment, and of course, the trustee's fiduciary responsibility to the endowment. So I have some data that I want to share there, because the, the endowment spending, of course, we've, we've held very steady at 4%. And so increasing that, increasing that, that percentage would, of course, increase the payout, but at what cost? And so that's what I kind of want to go through with you. How do we get here? So investment returns of the endowment have outpaced the spending rate, that includes plus inflation, over a long period of time. And this is a pretty remarkable number. As of June 30th of 2021, the 10-year annualized return for the endowment was 10.8%. So that translates to real growth of approximately 2% to 3% annually, and that assumes that 4% spending rate and an annual inflation of 2% to 4%. So the minute you hear me say those numbers, you know that we're in for a bit of a change and with inflation rates rising. And so that's incredibly important to me to set the terminology that I bring to our endowment work and to our endowment strategy and to our endowment thinking. And that is, and that is a terminology of stewardship. That is different than what guides a lot of financial conversations at small liberal arts colleges, which is really an approach of austerity. So for us, it's stewardship, and the, the way that we think of our stewardship is within the principle of intergenerational equity. And we meet it in two ways. One is, of course, for the endowment itself. Whatever dollar we spend today could have been $100 X number of years from now. So there's that sense of intergenerational equity of this resource lasting through time, perpetual. And then we think about intergenerational equity across generations of students as well, what we can make possible today and what we feel beholden to sustain long after our time at Grinnell. One of the key things here, and JT Thayer, our incredible chief investment officer, and again, the treasurer, and of course, our trustees as well, working with all sorts of different committees on these issues. One of the things that we think about is perpetuating and sustaining our no loan, to always make it possible for students to graduate from Grinnell without debt. That is a game changer in so many ways and for so many. So how to sustain that? You remember the phrase, too big to fail, too important, too important to fail. And so this is part of that stewardship of the endowment. This is part of staying at the 4% spending rate for the endowment because of what it makes possible 10, 20, 40, 50 years from now. Who knows what this country will look like then? Who knows what we will need to make possible at that time? And I really feel the power of education across generations and how much I, I, this is maybe when being a medievalist really comes into play, how this cathedral that we're building, right? How that has to go beyond us right now. It has to go beyond the budgets that I can see into this perpetual future for the institution. And part of the reason I feel so passionate about this is, is the, the reason I sit in this seat, I will say to you, is because of the transformative power of education that was made accessible. So my father fought in World War II. He was born in, in 1920. He is no longer with us, but he fought in World War II, and as a result, had access to the GI Bill, an access that was very restricted and did not include servicemen and women of color at the time. It does now. And so I realize the privilege that I have, that he had, to attend college through the GI Bill. He did so, and his generations have been transformed. I now have a child in college myself, and I'm humbled to think of that transformative power of education. The rest of the family that did not get to attend college had a different trajectory. Things have, things have continued. Education has always been important, but I just want to emphasize how much I feel the responsibility of making Grinnell College perpetual, yes, of making access to Grinnell College perpetual also. And so working with our incredible team here, thinking about our budget, I will tell you this, too, right now, at, at the 4% spending rate that we have, we have excellent stewardship among our faculty, among our staff, all of our budget managers. And they're thinking of it, we've talked a lot about this stewardship versus austerity, and we breathe very rare air compared to the rest of, of higher education, I would say, but especially small liberal arts colleges. So when, when we talk about creating budgets from the endowment allocation, all of those dollars are stewarded, that money is all accounted for. And I will say, it, we spend, yes, a great deal of money, and we spend it well, coming out of that 4%. We're doing good work now, and we're doing it that way so that we can keep doing it generations from now. So that's a lot of, that's a little bit of data and a lot of conviction and purpose. So I'll turn it over to you, Michael, because this is our partnership, the fiduciary care of the institution, and certainly the trustee role.
And there's a lot of alignment between the board and the president, and quite honestly, what the faculty, the students, the alums are looking for from Grinnell College and the types of investments we make. So a couple of things I would add to what, what Anna said, being in, in very strong alignment with her on all of this, we do think about both the present and the future. So trustees aren't only looking to the future. When we talk about intergenerational equity, it doesn't mean, let's save it all for a rainy day in the future in case we need it, even if it means not investing adequately in the present. It's, it's finding the balance, doing both. How do we advance the present? How do we serve today's students really well? How do we create access? How do we sustain something like no loan? Grinnell is one of only 12 schools that's both no loan and need line. We're in a rare space, and we feel this awesome responsibility to keep that going. But it's not just looking ahead. As our endowment does well and as it rises, so too did the size of those distributions. So while the payout rate is fixed at 4%, the dollars that flow in to the college to spend on current students, on current programs and faculty keeps going up. It's not just putting it out there for future generations. It has a very real impact on today's students, on today's faculty. The other thing I would tell you is that for my seven years on the board, all seven years, and even prior to that, the board has made decisions to allocate additional amounts from the endowment for special purposes, including funding a set of reserves. So when we make these additional distributions, the actual payout rate from the endowment, the actual distributions end up being much higher than, than 4%. They're closer to 5%. Those reserves played a big role when COVID hit, and the college lost millions of dollars in revenue and had other, other financial needs that I mentioned earlier. Anne was able to draw upon those reserves and not have any impact on staff or faculty, not cut programs, not say, too bad to those students who didn't have the financial means to have Wi-Fi or laptops. The college was able to make all of that happen. That's using the endowment and its resources in a very tangible way to meet the needs of the present, and, and we're proud to manage those resources in that way. Do you think Bernard has the next question?
Yep, that's me. All right, just unmuted myself, sorry about that. Oh, hey, everyone, I'm Bernard Jackson, class of 1986, calling in tonight from Maynard, Massachusetts. Right? Our next question comes from Mary Lou Hustedter Thompson, class of 1958. She asks the following, "What percentage of Grinnell students are taking out loans, and what percentage are loan-free?"
Bernard, it's great to see you. Really was so good to see you when you were on campus so recently. So thank you very, very much, Mary Lou, for your question as well. So we are in our second year of the no loan initiative. And again, what we did there, what that means, is that where previously loans had been packaged in our financial aid packages, now that's been replaced by grant. So in our second year, at this point, no student enrolled at Grinnell is offered a student loan as part of their initial aid package. So instead, what's, again, as I said, I really want to emphasize this, so what does that mean, right? That we filled it in with grant, and this is all, this is that use of the endowment. I mean, that was a big, big addition to the operating budget, absolutely worthwhile and absolutely crucial to maintain. So students can still, I've been asked the question, does that mean students can't get a loan? No, they can still borrow. It's called, now we call it discretionary borrowing because it's at their discretion versus at an obligation from within the financial aid package. So some numbers, the class of 2021 borrowers qualified for one year of no loan, right? So that was just at the very beginning, and graduated with an average indebtedness of $19,000, which is among the lowest rates in the country. This year, less than 15% of the student population has made the choice to borrow, and that's significantly less than the 62% who borrowed in our last cycle prior to no loan. So this is giving families and households much more flexibility to think about what they're doing if they want to take out a loan. That's their discretion, and you can see those numbers have shrunk tremendously. And, and it's really not part of financial aid anymore. So that really gives, again, more and more flexibility there. So that's to give you a sense of how we're moving along in this. And we're, as Michael mentioned, we're in very, very small company. Now, Williams College just announced yesterday that they are taking the work contribution out of financial aid packages. We haven't done that here, but we are thinking so much about student employment, and it is a conversation that is beginning in terms of there's a summer work contribution, and then there's an academic year work contribution. And so thinking about the, the place that that holds and the amount that that holds within a financial aid package, I would say is kind of the next chapter of this access trajectory that we're on. And it's not just access, it's thriving, it's well-being, it's being able to have choices and agency, and summer is really what I'm looking at next, because that work contribution in the summer has often in the past compelled students to make a choice for a higher wage earning job than, let's say, a research opportunity. That's the one that we want to break through, and we actually have some marvelous, beautiful gifts that have helped us to fund summer research so that students no longer have to make that choice. It, it pays just as much, and in fact, it helps, it covers the summer work contribution. So that, I would say, is the, is the very next space, but we're moving towards this space where with, very soon, 0% of our students will be obligated to have a loan as part of their financial aid package. And as you can see, even the few years that we've had, the two years that we've had no loan in place, discretionary borrowing has dropped dramatically from 62% to 15%. So I'm really grateful for your question. This is where I think about also intergenerational equity. We have this conversation we're developing here that we're calling equitable launch. So it's not just coming into the institution with as many possibilities as possible. It's not only experiencing internships and off-campus study and all sorts of things that can happen here, athletics and so forth, at the institution. It's also, how do you leave us when you graduate? Do you carry debt? What can we do to take that away? And I think with no loan, we're doing that right now. So equitable launch is the next part of what we're looking at here. To continue to answer that question, what, what does a loan mean? It means something that students carry, to go back to my carry and bring, it means that it's something that our graduates would carry for a long time. And in that, we also follow first destination surveys of where our students are going. We know that students who don't carry loans have more options in their employment or graduate school choices as well. So this pays forward in so many different ways.
Good evening, everyone, from down here in Dallas, Texas. I am Anne Porcarey, class of 1981, and am truly so happy to be with you tonight. My question comes from Erin Higgins, class of 2009, who wrote to inquire about mental health services. Erin's question is, "I wonder, I wonder what it's like for current students at Grinnell. Are the mental health services, are the mental health services offered at the Student Health Center at least adequate at this point?"
Thank you, Anne, so much for your question, and I appreciate the company, the K9 company that we're hearing here. So this is a crucial question, and one that I think has been made even more important in the pandemic and absolutely relevant to residential college campuses and, and deep, deep within the experience of Grinnell. So I will tell you that since 2009, when you graduated, Erin, things have changed tremendously in terms of mental health services. So currently, we're offering more mental health services than we ever have previously at the college. And again, I want to give some concrete answers, some concrete data to that. And actually, actually, mostly it'll be concrete information on this one to, to tell you what we're doing. The one kind of abstract thing I will say is just to reiterate how much our students are leading and how much our students are teaching us in the falling away of the stigma of asking support for mental health, that mental health is seen along with, of course, physical health, medical health. We've introduced the term of social health. I mean, we haven't introduced it. We use the term of social health on the campus. And we're also starting to understand better the intersectionality of mental health with carrying debt, with distance from home, with isolation. So mental health, I think, is seen in intersectionality. It is seen with less stigma, and consequently, it is being responded to. So we have at Grinnell College a counselor-to-student ratio of 425 to 1. And that sounds pretty stark compared to the student-faculty ratio, I'm sorry, it's a student-to-counselor ratio of 425 to 1. Our student-to-faculty ratio is 9 to 1. However, not every student sees a counselor. What's important here is the comparative ratio, which is one counselor for every 1,000 to 1,500 students, and that's from the International Association of Counseling Services and their recommendation for student mental health counseling. So we're, we're, we're well within that number. We've also really developed Shaw. We have a dean of health and wellness whose specialization, this is Dean Terry Mason, whose specialization is mental health. And so he's brought the, the spectrum of care model, which may be familiar to some of you, of mental health services, and this specifically matches student needs with available resources. So there's much more of a connecting of students with a sustainable resource for their mental health. And of course, our team is there for acute, acute experiences of mental health support. And I will say, I'm in awe admiration, this is day, night, oh my goodness, near, far, especially during the pandemic, so much that went on. I, I also want to underscore how much our faculty and staff are tuned in to student well-being. I mean, there's a deference to the expertise of mental health that mental health professionals have, but there's also a care and a concern and an attention that's being paid to well-being. One of my last in-person faculty meetings in December of 2019, I, I asked the highly rhetorical question, because I wanted it to hang in the air so we can continue to answer it, saying, "We know that we hold our students' education in trust. Do we also hold their well-being in trust?" And the idea is, what does that mean? Is it about checking in? Is it about connecting the student? Is it about a particular kind of model, a particular kind of access? And the answer is yes, 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 to all of these. So here are some practical things that we've done to expand the possibilities of care. One is that Shaw is now a doctoral practicum site. We partner with the University of Iowa, who's, we, we partnered with several different divisions in the University of Iowa at this point. We had incredible, we continue to have incredible partners at the University of Iowa in the pandemic, and working with an epidemiologist, working with, actually, a whole team of individuals there, we were able to think about, again, the medical health, physical health, mental health of our students. So that's very important, because what that means is that we have about three or four doctoral students and a graduate assistant who work with Dr. Charles Birmingham at the University of Iowa, and those students can connect with ours and provide mental health support. And I will say, they've, the, one of the reasons, this is one of those reasons that we've kept connected with this program, which we really have come to believe in, it also increases the diversity of mental health professionals that our students can work with, and that is extremely and that is extremely important. Identity is another intersectionality when it comes to mental health support. It can be very, very important. And then here, we have an interesting new development since the pandemic, I will say. We can now offer unlimited 24/7 telehealth with MDs and mental health services, with licensed counselors. We are part of the VCG, the Virtual Care Group. They also provide 24/7 crisis counseling. So, that's a game changer. And for some students, virtual or telehealth for mental health was what they preferred, to be in their room, to be in an intimate space, to have access through a screen. For other students, in-person is absolutely still what they need. So, we have more options and more, more call for more options from our students, or more response to more options. And I think maybe before the pandemic, the telehealth option was seen as substandard. The pandemic, I think, has moved some of that forward. So, I think this is really, really important. And then, here's one of these interconnected Grinnell stories. And to do so, I'm going to have to take a sip of water. There we go, because this one is, this one is really fascinating. So, Shaw, Student Health and Wellness, has contracted with Neolth, N-E-O-L-T-H, to provide a free stress and anxiety management program and app. And this is an important, to me, Grinnell story, because Neolth came out of the Tech Stars Iowa, which is an entrepreneurship hub that Grinnell College participates in. So, we're now benefiting from this support of ideas and this support of entrepreneurship with this particular app that helps students kind of manage their stress and anxiety. And I will tell you, you know, mother of three teenagers, although my oldest is about to turn 20, which is just incredible, but mother of three teenagers, they do manage themselves in different ways through apps, and this could be everything from, I have one child who is very well hydrated, I have another child who really tracks their sleep and so forth. So, I think this kind of agency and choice is really important in mental health, the principle of removing the stigma, the principle of talking about it. We will be, I want to point out to you that our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion includes what are called disability services of the Office of Disability. We are having conversations about neurodiversity, about really expanding the spectrum of mental health so that everyone, everyone is thinking about their mental health, and that can be part of that work-life balance, that can, the spectrum from, you know, walking into our community every day to those moments of crisis, there's a large spectrum that's there. I hope, I hope, Erin, I've been able, and everyone else, I've been able to provide some concrete information for what we've changed, more counselors, more telehealth, more partnerships, and more awareness all around of the importance. This is why one of my strategic principles is health and well-being. It absolutely includes mental health. I can't thank you enough for that question. I think it's a crucial one for higher education, and it's at the heart of Grinnell right now.
Hello from the Rose City, Portland, Oregon. My name is David Jarvis, and I am from the class of 2004. Our next question comes from Lee Tracy, class of 1962, and it is, "What is the single greatest challenge facing Grinnell College?"
David, it's great to see you. And the little companion on your bookshelf that I can see on the screen, I believe wearing a Grinnell College t-shirt, a mini t-shirt, which I think is terrific. So, single greatest challenge, belonging and its intersectionalities. That's the shortest answer that I can give. But of course, it goes into the very depth of our purpose, the very depth of what we're seeking to do. So, belonging and its intersectionalities, intersectionalities of identity, intersectionalities of understanding, being understood, intersectionalities of purpose. And I had mentioned earlier that that graduation rate number really has a qualitative element of belonging, but I think it is the single greatest challenge. I think we are emerging from a period and a set of conditions of isolation that will take concerted effort. I really love that phrase, concerted effort, partnership effort, to sway, to change, to overturn, to overcome. Isolation is extremely difficult for the human condition, and we've just endured two very intense and for very many, for everybody, grueling years of it. So, I can tell you, again, from my own personal experience as a mother, and also a mother of teenagers, and also from what we're seeing and what we're hearing from our students, and I'm so grateful to them for the way that they reach out and the way that they connect with us to say, "Hey, this is what I need." So, things like conflict management have been really different since the pandemic, because there's been so much more social media, so much more virtual. To be in a residential situation, to, to have minor issues that can become conflict issues, and conflict, to me, is never a bad thing. Conflict means that something matters. Conflict management is where we need to bring our skills and where we need to develop skills. And arguably, one could say this for the entire planet at this point, that the entire planet needs conflict management skill training. But let's take our responsibility here at Grinnell, right? Let's see what kind of light we can shine from this institution when it comes to actively cultivating a sense of belonging. And so, I cite something very specific like conflict management. I would also put in things like this wonderful old English word, fun, right? This idea of being able to relax enough to have that sense of fun and that sense of security that in many ways fun needs. Now, one can have abandon, that's not quite the same thing as fun, right? And I don't go to Harris parties, I don't know what goes on there, but I'm hoping it's fun and not just abandon, meaning that there's enough of a sense of security. And there's a great deal of conversation about safe spaces, brave spaces, that can come in the context of discussing racial justice and other very important topical issues. I also think every time of what it means to come to Grinnell, what it means to drive down I-80, what it means to fly into Des Moines or maybe Chicago. And when I had the incredible joy and privilege of visiting Ghana and had a meal with Grinnellians, with Grinnell alums, Ghanaian Grinnell alums in Ghana, in fact, it was in the city of Accra, a mother spoke of coming with her child to Grinnell sight unseen. They had just fallen in love with the institution through the people that they had spoken to, through the possibilities that were being presented to them at the college. And she talked about landing in Des Moines, and she talked about the long silent drive from Des Moines to Grinnell College. And I think about, the way she described it was just so powerful, and she was a great storyteller, so there were long moments of silence in her story. And it made me think about what it would mean to come here and to have that hour of driving and thinking of the possibilities and of what the landscape is saying. And it is a pretty empty landscape, what is that possibility? So, this connects back to belonging, there can be an emptiness here or there can be an open space. They're going to look the same, but they're going to feel very different. So, I think about that with belonging, I think of the trust that people put in us in order to come here. Very, very few people are local to Grinnell. Our staff members come from all over, whether it's all over the state, all over the country as well. Our faculty certainly, certainly do, and our students, as you know now, are very, very global. So, we have, it's Grinnell, we have a task force, we have a belonging and persistence task force to meet this challenge because of the intersectionality of it. And one of the focuses is, I mentioned, conflict management, identity and space. So, place and space really matter. This is why we're focusing on the lived experience in our residence halls so very much. This is why we're focusing on the lived experience of our classrooms. We have a whole course, this .5 credit course out of a possible four credits, called the First Year Experience Connections Course. It's really, and I had the honor of teaching in it, okay, the joy, the fun of teaching in it this spring. And one of the questions I asked our students, I said, "Map for me, map the campus of where the most transformative conversations you're having are happening." Dining hall, overwhelmingly the dining hall. So, that makes me think about food, about spices from home, about all the different ways. If that's an important space for transformative conversations, how do we connect to it? So, I can talk about this at length, and of course, you will hear me do so over the next many years, because community as a strategic principle is absolutely undergirded by this challenge and this mission of creating belonging. I want to end with this point here on this one, that these challenges of belonging that Grinnell faces are not separate from the challenges that we face in this country of people feeling a sense of belonging to this democracy, to their community, to their purpose, to their work, to their employment. And I absolutely maintain this, that our academic modes of research, of deliberation, and of collaboration can become civic modes as well. Civic modes of research, civic modes, community modes of deliberation and of collaboration, and they will build belonging because they build trust. And that's a fundamental principle of belonging.
Good evening, Grinnellians. I am Dawn Helsing-Walters. I'm from the class of 1987, and I'm joining you tonight from Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. Our final question tonight is from Frederick Alexander Mann, class of 1997. And the final question is, "What have you learned about the Grinnell campus and our larger community in the past two years?"
That is so, I love your question, that is absolutely fantastic. Dawn, thank you so, so much, I so appreciate that one, because I feel like I have yet to come to know Grinnell. I still haven't been to the Imanah Colonies, I feel like that's important. I've been to lots of other, well, okay, no, not that many. I have had the absolute pleasure of traveling to nearby communities, but I still feel like I'm exploring the whole region. Now, when it comes to Grinnell itself, I will say, the town of Grinnell is an awesome, awesome place. And I, you know, there are moments for me that are really important, really important in terms of, some, a group of young alumni said to me, you know, President Harris, "Keep Grinnell weird." And so, I was like, "Okay, keep Grinnell weird, I'm going to keep that principle." I, there is this spirit in this place that I think is marvelous. Now, it shows up for me in the Bagpipe Group, the Bagpipe Core, I guess it's called, that we have here in Grinnell. I have heard them play live, I have heard the sounds of the Bagpipe across the prairie, it is quite a sound. And for me and my training as a medievalist, it meant a great deal to hear that live and in action. I will say, it has, it is a community that is built on relationships and that is amplified in its partnerships. And I'll describe what that means in several different ways. Well, I can go right to it. I mean, the way that we partnered in the pandemic, the college and the community, we have a GRIN Together campaign, and that's two N's in GRIN Together campaign, that was powerful to see, for me to go to the radio station and to have really informed questions asked of me about the college, questions that were informed by care as well as curiosity, to partner with so many different community organizations, and then to think of all the different ways that our community seeks to host and support our students. We have, of course, international student hosts, we have lots and lots of opportunities to come together. And I will tell you, one of the ways that I invite you to think about Grinnell, comma, Iowa, is as a micropolis. This is a term that was taught to me by Vice President for Community Engagement, Monica Chavez, a micropolis. It is a town where 62 different languages are spoken, where there's all these different possibilities. Micropolises are towns of 10,000 people or less where something unusual is happening that resonates with urban experience. So, that kind of multiplicity. I want to point out to you, the Grinnell College Community Connections is a great place for you to find out what's happening in Grinnell. Now, I feel like a booster, but I am. It's a great place for you to find out what's happening in the city of Grinnell. This Saturday, there's a Grinnell Hometown Expo from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., where students are presenting booths and experiences from their hometowns all over the world and all over the country. And so, I could talk about this a lot longer, but I have a sense that our time might be drawing to a close. So, I just want to, I really want to talk, I really want to emphasize, a place of relationships, the possibilities of partnerships that we have here, and I have much discovery left to do that I can't wait to do.
Well, with that, I know we're nearing the end of tonight's Town Hall event. We just have a couple of quick things to share with you as we close. So, I want to start by thanking all of you on the Alumni Council and President Harris for your time tonight, but an even greater thanks to you, my fellow alums, for sharing your questions, for tuning in, for your continued engagement with the college. As alumni, donors, and volunteers, your involvement and support helps Grinnell to change lives, by extension, helps Grinnellians change the world for the better for many years to come. And I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge the amazing support from this community in helping Grinnell achieve the largest fundraising campaign in the college's history that ended last summer. More than 19,500 Grinnellians enthusiastically invested in our students during the campaign, raising over $189 million for the college. So, tonight, I raise a glass to everyone who supported our college, I guess not showing up in the virtual background so well. And before we say goodnight, I also have to acknowledge the incredible ways this community has come together over just the last 36 hours during Scarlet and Give Back Day. Together, we raised more than $1.2 million these last two days for more than 2,500 donors. Your gifts will make all the difference to our current and future students. Special thanks to Betsy Walcott, 75, Tommy Erday, 95, and Stephen Sanquist, 95, for offering the first matching gift challenge, and thanks to my fellow members of the Board of Trustees for offering the second matching gift challenge. But mostly, thank you to everyone in our global Grinnell community who came together to support our students, with donors from all 50 states, 20 different countries represented during this event. It feels great to be a Grinnellian.
Congratulations to everybody, this is so terrific. I would say, you know, what have I learned? I have it too, Michael, I have the same bug. We really are greater together. Think of what we're making possible, and thank you so, so much.
And we're not done with celebrations, but speaking of celebrations, in just over three weeks, on Saturday, May 7, our campus will gather together to officially and finally inaugurate AND, and we plan to livestream the ceremony from central campus. I hope you'll consider tuning in again to the same website, grinnell.edu/livestream. If you're ready to venture out and be in the same space with fellow Grinnellians, please consider registering for reunion, for Young Alumni Weekend, or one of the 32 summer picnics planned to bring Grinnellians back together. The college staff, students, alumni, volunteers who make these events happen are eager and excited to welcome you back. So, thank you all again so much. Stay healthy, strong, and safe, Grinnellians. Good night, all.